Communications, we have a big pack of items for number thirteen in the hospital. And then we have persons who we heard Nancy Teeman? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Teeman. I am the interim chief administrative officer of Ketchikan Medical Center. And we are delighted to be here tonight with you. We have a ninety-four year history of working successfully with the city. And we're looking forward to bringing this project to closure in just a few weeks. So, thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Nancy? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gary Hall.
Yes. I'm Gary Hall with Peace Health. And I'm assistant vice president of facilities and construction. And I'm also here in support of the hospital change order agenda item. And I'm available to answer questions as well.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Joe.
Good evening, Joe. I can't please be called.
You brought backup.
I brought backup.
Always good. Never enter a dangerous situation without backup.
For your friends, yes. One of the reasons I'm here tonight is I constantly hear from the teenage members, "Who are your officers?" I have no idea who they are. So, these are two new officers. Daryl Nichols, Justin Oster. Justin's from Ketchikan. He has family ties. He was raised here. He's heading off to the academy at the end of the month. Well, he will learn everything he needs to know about becoming a police officer. Daryl here, we borrowed him from California, hopefully long-term borrow. He retired out of Fresno and was up here last May on a cruise and decided Ketchikan was his place to be. So, I just want to introduce both of these new officers to you guys.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Kevin, come on up.
I'm going to stay seated this time.
No problem.
So, for the record, Kevin Gadsie representing the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition, six oh two Dock Street, Suite one oh eight. Wanted to just give you all a few quick updates and make an introduction in just a moment. First of all, we've had a lot of success in the past month and we've with the homeless and inebriate task force that the city put together and helped and just to remind you did so much being able to pull that together. We have continued those discussions via email and generally is, sorry, council member Gage has been part of it. We are going to be hosting the first meeting of the new year at the city fire hall station next Tuesday at three thirty in the afternoon. So, if anyone is interested in continuing that discussion, we'd appreciate you being there. We will also tomorrow morning at eleven o'clock, I'm going to be meeting with Matt Eisenhower to put together an agenda and a sort of a discussion framework for the first meeting as he has also volunteered to help co-facilitate that meeting. And thank you for your support on that. Secondly, I, since I'm up here, I just wanted to make a quick comment about the nonprofit community funding and the fact that I've been back for a year and a week now. And I've seen so much collaboration between the nonprofits this year. And it's really taken, gone to a new level. And I really hope we can find a way to continue that collaboration between all the different Third point, we have, as you all know, a grant called, a federal grant called the Drug-Free Communities Grant through the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. And one of the goals of that grant has been to help put together a youth advocacy group at the high school and basically a task force there. And I'm very pleased to announce that it's taken a little while, but we were finally able to get the meeting and on average about ten students per year, ten students per meeting, sorry. And we, they actually held their very first event at the school cook-off between teachers and students with lots of wonderful information about drug-free living sprinkled through there by the student announcer of the event. And they had about twenty-five people show up to be able to at least just start the promotion, start the discussion, and we'll see where it goes from there. But everybody came out of it really, really fired up and really excited, both teachers and students. So, with that, I also have some big news. We're going to be introducing, I'm introducing the new Drug-Free Communities Grant Director who is a familiar face to a lot of folks in Ketchikan. Reed Harding, can you come up? So, Reed worked with Community Connections in the ORS program back in about two thousand nine through two thousand eleven. And is a familiar face to Ketchikan. And we're looking forward to having him be part of the team. Reed, you want to say a few words?
Well, I'm really excited to be back in Ketchikan. I was down southeastside over five years with my family and my girls, my teenage daughters, and I got the young ones to assist at it to move back here. My wife's really excited too. And I'm here to listen to you guys and echo to everybody here to find out the best solutions for our community in dealing with, you know, a drug problem.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Kevin. Next on the list, Lindsay Lamont.
Well, I'm Lindsay Lamont. I am here representing the Ketchikan FASD Community Partnership. I am a public health nurse who is fairly new to town and had the chance to join this group pretty early on coming up here and just was motivated by the energy that they have. So, I'll let Diane, I'm sure you guys know.
Thank you.
Excuse me, you're not on the list.
Can I say I'm deaf?
We really object. We should yell whistle.
I'm just as happy here. Good evening, Mayor Williams and members of the council. I'm here representing, well, I'm on the Wellness Coalition, but I'm a member of the Ketchikan FASD Community Partnership. We're a very new group in terms of our name, but we've been meeting for over a year. And I just want to give you a list of some, this is one of the most amazing collaborative efforts I've ever been involved with here in Ketchikan. Among the members are SAO, Ketchikan Indian Community, Ketchikan Gateway Borough School District, Gateway Akila, Ketchikan Public Health, Community Connections, The Public Defender, OCS, Women in Safe Homes, and the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. So, it's an amazing group of agencies working together. We started out over a year ago concerned about parents losing custody of their children and not getting enough support when they were in trouble, having difficulties raising their children and OCS got involved. And early learning started the meeting way back in November of two thousand fifteen. But over the course of time, as we met, we all recognized that we were talking about an issue that affects many people in this community, not just parents, but our students and adults and lots of people. In fact, the homeless issue that we've been addressing here in Ketchikan for a lot more recently, shall I say, more intensely, I would suspect that FASD, fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, is an issue for many of those people living on the street. So, anyway, long story short, we all came in on the same focus of we want to do more in this community to raise awareness, to provide support, to get people involved. Because as we are sadly aware, Alaska is number one in the United States in terms of incidence of fetal alcohol spectrum disorder. And we want to help those that have it. If you don't already know it, there's no cure. People are born with it, it's brain damage due to alcohol exposure in the fetus. And it causes all, like they say, there's a spectrum of disorders. So, it's a serious issue. We probably have people sitting in jail now that are suffering from fetal alcohol spectrum disorder because of issues. One of the things is they cannot connect cause and effect. They have no sense of, if I do this now, I'm going to get in trouble, it's going to cause this kind of consequence. Anyway, long story short, we're really trying to, we pulled together with Ketchikan Indian Community Got a Grant, and they graciously shared it with our organization. And so, we're putting together a three-day event here in Ketchikan. And Lindsay's going to share more details about it, but we're bringing in some phenomenal resource people. And we're here tonight to inform you about this event later this month and also to extend a personal invitation and hope that you'll be able to attend one or more of the events. So, Nancy.
Okay. So, like Diane said, it's going to be a three-day event. It's going to start the evening of Sunday, February nineteenth. That evening is going to be a short film and the speaker, Morgan Fawcett, will be here. He's an Alaskan native who has lived with FASD his whole life and does a lot of amazing songwriting presentations. He's also a flute player and may even bring his flute with him. So, he'll kind of be talking about the lived experience of FASD that evening. Monday, we're having kind of an all-day, an eight to four program at the Ketchikan High School. I guess I should say K-Hi, right? K-Hi, that's my son, they're next thing coming up. And there, there will be a lot, the teachers will be in service. So, there's going to be breakout sessions, there's going to be information on the medicals side of FASD and how that relates to the lived experience of FASD. We're bringing in Genevieve Casey, who works for the State of Alaska's FASD program. And we're also bringing in Key Warner, who is head of the, oh gosh.
White Pro Village.
White Pro Village in British Columbia. In British Columbia. And they have done a lot of work with FASD. So, they will all be speaking Monday. And the Monday evening, we're going to have a panel of the same speakers, but then also we have invited a lot of different community members from special education teachers to Buster parents. We have, I think, someone from Public Defenders possibly coming that evening?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm losing my voice. So, we're in, lots of community members that are going to also be sitting on the panel. So, we're hoping to have a really good open discussion about FASD from both ends. Lots of questions, lots of public involvement. And then Tuesday, we will be meeting from eight to one, and we're hoping that different community organizations will come together. We're going to hold what's called a community cafe. And we're going to hopefully share ideas together and come up with a community, inter-agency community action plan for FASD and kind of hope to gather support and invite people to come to our meetings that will continue to go on so that we can help support these families. And I think really, you know, you think about FASD and you think, oh, gosh, this is, you know, it's a hard thing to deal with. And you think of all the sad things and people in jail and children in foster care, ten times more likely to suffer from it. But what we really want to come out of this, this event is all of the positive things that can come. If FASD is recognized early and if these people are given the support they need in the community and how our community can come together to support these people, these families, to break the cycle so they don't continue to foster more of our kids with this problem. So, we're really excited about it. I have flyers and draft agendas I was going to pass out to all you guys, if that's okay.
You bet.
And then I will take the rest of them and I'll just put them on the back table here. So, if anybody obviously is ready to meet, is invited, if you guys on the way out and pick up a flyer and pass it on, that would be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for your time.
You bet. Thank you.
Will I pass that?
You had her?
I ran this thing to you. That's why I brought that I got along.
Very good.
It's the best thing. Please go.
Thank you. Karen Hutton.
I'm Karen Hutton. I represent the Ketchikan CWMA. And I'm here to briefly tell you about this new volunteer group. CWMA stands for Cooperative Weed Management Area. And I want to tell you about what we've been doing this last year and what our plans are. We have about thirty members and we have representatives from state and federal agencies, landowners, landowners and businesses, and some citizens of Ketchikan. And we come together with a common interest to remove invasive plants. Invasive plants are, they come here from other continents and regions. And unlike a common weed, perhaps they can really take over an area and they can harm other plants and animals and even people. And so, we have a few major ones that we'd like to work on. If you turn the page over, there's a graph on the other side, and it shows the invasion curve for an invasive species. You have, this is, this shows the spread over time and also the increase in cost. And on the x-axis on the bottom is time increasing. And on the y-axis is area infested and also cost. And so, you can see down in the green area, that's when a non-native invasive plant might first be introduced. And at this stage, of course, it's very easy to remove it. You can just pull a single plant and it's gone. But it's usually not detected until a population gets going. And it's still, it's still possible to remove a plant at that point. You generally become aware of the problem when there are a few more plants and it can, and then the public doesn't even become aware of it until later on. You can see that the cost increases with time. So, what we would like to do is start early. We can do that up in Alaska because we've been watching our, the state down south in Oregon and Washington, and we know which plants are potentially a real problem here. And one of the plants that we are focusing on in Ketchikan is the Tansey Ragwort. In this picture down here, you can see King County, Washington, they have quite an infestation of Tansey Ragwort in places. They spend two point five million dollars each year for their invasive plant implementation, regulation, and advising. And this last year, our volunteer group collected eight thousand pounds of this plant just simply by volunteer work. Fortunately, this next three years, we have funding from the Resource Allocation Committee of the rural schools. And we are able to hire two SEAs to help work full-time on this this summer. Tansey Ragwort is of concern because it causes permanent liver damage to animals that browse on it, domestic and wild animals, and some humans are allergic to it. And so, if you turn the page back over again, halfway down, there's a list. And our goals for the next three years are to map and remove the eight species on the left and then to educate the community about the sixteen species on the right. And you can see on the far right, there's a number. And that number is a ranking system that the State of Alaska has come up with from zero to a hundred. The closer you get to a hundred, the more invasive and more potentially damaging a plant is. So, that's that list there. And another thing that we'd really like to do is get some funding to help private landowners eradicate Tansey from their, from their fields. It's, there's still, there's quite a bit up in the Ward Cove area and some down in Fawn Mountain. But we do have a possible funding source for this, but what we need is a non-federal established organization that can take responsibility for the reporting and the financial paperwork. So, we're looking for that. There's some resources if you want to find out more. We meet monthly at the library, usually on Mondays, and all are welcome. And I just wanted you guys to know about our group and please offer us support and join us anytime.
Thank you very much. Oh, any other question?
Oh, yeah.
So, in regards to these highway projects, State of Alaska comes in and they do hydroseeding. What assurances that we have that these invasive species aren't coming in in a mixture of hydroseed chipped in from downtown?
Yeah, they are being pretty careful about that now. The DOT has best management practices that they are following. There are more and more sorts of seed, guaranteed seed-free or invasive plant seed-free products. And I don't know exactly where that is right now. We're learning as we go also. But the people to call would be the DOT to find out more about that. And we're all trying to work together now, you know, we're all on the same land, it's all connected. So, it seems to be that we're, we really are all becoming more aware of it and trying to work together on those things.
So, as an individual property owner, if you were to take these invasive species plants off your property, how do you dispose of them?
Yeah. The landfill has been gracious here to accept those for free. And if you tell them that it's an invasive plant that you're removing from your property and they even have plastic bags that you can use to put them in. So, so far, this is something that they have been helping us with.
And we incinerate that, is that correct?
And that's correct.
Yeah, we don't put it in the landfill, we incinerate it.
Thank you, guys.
So, you bring them.
And that's important because we don't want to be spreading the seeds. So, if you remove your plant before it has flowered and gone to seed, great. If it's going to seed, you want to make sure you get it all the way in the bag, tie that bag shut, bring it to the landfill, and they will burn it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Terrence.
Good evening, everybody. Terrence Robbins, Southeast Prevention Services, thirty-seven ten Hillside Road. I'd like to give you a little update on tobacco. As you know, the borough election had a successful passing of a two-dollar-per-pack tax on tobacco cigarettes and fifty percent of the wholesale value of other tobacco products, including e-cigarettes. This is great because currently our youth tobacco use rates remain extremely high. About twenty percent of Ketchikan's youth in the high school use tobacco products. They don't, they don't test or they don't survey at the junior high. So, we don't have those numbers. We do know that over forty percent of the kids at Revilla High School are current tobacco The reason this is a problem is ninety percent of adult smokers become addicted to nicotine before they turn eighteen. And ninety-nine percent of adult smokers became addicted before they turned twenty-six, which is when the brains become fully developed. And the younger youth start smoking, the harder it is for them to quit later on. Nicotine harms the brain development. It's the, and it's the leading cause of preventable deaths in Alaska. It caused fifteen percent of all deaths last year. And we just lost somebody in a fire due to smoking. So, it can, it can take lives either ways, too. It causes more deaths each year than Alaska than suicide, motor vehicle crashes, chronic liver disease and cirrhosis, homicide, and HIV/AIDS combined. And in Alaska in two thousand twelve, the most recent numbers we have, tobacco use costs Alaskans an estimated seven hundred and sixty-nine million dollars in direct medical costs and lost productivity. That works out to, for every pack of cigarettes sold in Alaska, the citizens and government pay twenty dollars in direct costs. And these are average numbers for Alaska, but in Ketchikan, I've included a spreadsheet that, from the Alaska Bureau of Adult Statistics, that shows the cancer mortality rates by death by borough for two thousand twelve. And the key number to look at there is Ketchikan's all-malignant cancer deaths per hundred thousand is two thirty-one point nine. The four, the four cities with tobacco taxes at the top, Siskiyou, Anchorage, and Fairbanks, are between a hundred and four percent and twenty-nine percent lower in their cancer mortality rates than we are. And then if you look at just the respiratory system cancer deaths, it's also significant. Tobacco excise taxes reduce your cancer rates because they reduce the number of people who smoke and chew tobacco and stuff like that. So, what can we do? We can enact tobacco taxes to raise the retail prices. For every, each ten percent you raise the retail price of cigarettes, youth smoking rates drop eight percent. For each ten percent you raise the retail price of cigarettes, adult smoking rates will drop three point five percent. And the smoking rates for pregnant women drop seven percent. And it's surprising how many women in Alaska use, continue to smoke while pregnant. The State Department of Epidemiology has a report on that that's pretty, pretty shocking. It's the same with marijuana use while pregnant. Just blows my mind. Higher retail prices reduce tobacco use because youth and poorer people have less disposable income to purchase tobacco with. Also, youth tend to get tobacco from their peers. If fewer peers can afford tobacco, then there are fewer peers, fewer people to give them tobacco. I brought up the tobacco tax that had been passed by the Ketchikan Gateway Borough. And Mr. Flora, you weren't on the assembly, I mean, on the council at that time, but there were, there were many meetings last year regarding tobacco tax. And the city and borough were trying to work together. And the Cooperative Relations Committee came up with a recommendation of three dollars per pack, seventy-five percent on other tobacco products. I've kind of outlined the highlights of what, what they ended up putting on the ballot was only two dollars a pack plus fifty percent on other tobacco products. They also, by amendment, excluded any of the tax revenue from the city of Ketchikan, although I believe ninety, way over ninety percent of all sales are in the city of Ketchikan. And I think the agreement was, Mr. Amel, could maybe help me out, is either a sixty-forty split on the revenue or fifty-fifty? I don't remember if it was based on population or just an even split of the revenue that was proposed. They also added a five-year sunset clause to their, to the excise tax. And, let's see, and then by amendment, they chose to divert eighty-five percent of the tax revenue to the school reserve fund away from community grant funding, which is what they previously talked about doing. And I'd like to point out that the excise tax passed in every city precinct and all the boroughs precincts except for North Conics Number Two, which doesn't surprise anybody at all. So, I, that's pretty much all I have except for, I did include a spreadsheet. I did a, I've given this to you in the past, but I updated the numbers. And it's the excise tax information worksheet. And it just goes by the price of Marlboroughs, so you can kind of compare. And then how much, from the Department of Revenue, I was able to get how many packs are sold in the state, and I just divided it by our population. So, in Ketchikan, last, in fiscal year twenty sixteen, there were five hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four packs of cigarettes sold in Ketchikan. The, and then I've got the projected revenues for a two-dollar tax or a three-dollar tax. And then it also showed, estimated that there were three hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of other tobacco products sold in Ketchikan. And that doesn't include e-cigarettes. I have no idea what those numbers are. So, if it was raised an additional dollar a pack, that would generate a combined between other tobacco products and cigarettes, estimated six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year. That can be put to whatever uses you want for reducing tobacco use or making Ketchikan healthier or general fun or whatever you guys like. And then the last column shows, remember I talked about if you increase tobacco prices, the retail price, it drops youth tobacco use by eight percent for every ten percent. So, the last four columns are, the tobacco tax raised the retail price in Ketchikan twenty percent at Walmart. Walmart went from six eighty-one a pack to eight eighty-one a pack as of today. And that should reduce our youth tobacco use rates by fourteen percent. And then, or approximately fourteen percent. If it goes up to three dollars a pack, now we're getting our student tobacco use rate down to about fourteen percent from about twenty percent nineteen, which is not ideal, still really high, but there's, there's no way you're taxing more than a three-dollar tax if you choose to do something like that. But that would reduce it twenty-eight percent, pretty much immediately. We could see a twenty-eight percent drop in youth smoking rates, which would be outstanding. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to take them or I can be reached anytime.
Any questions for Terrence? Yes.
14% from about 20% in 19, which is not ideal, still really high, but there's no way your tax is going to be more than a $3 tax if you choose to do something like that. But that would reduce it 28% pretty much immediately. We could see a 28% drop in youth smoking rates, which would be outstanding. So if you have any questions, I'm here to take them, or I can be reached anytime.
Any questions for Terrence?
So the average pack in, like, Anchorage now is?
Is $10.50 a pack in Anchorage. It's $12 a pack in Petersburg and $11 a pack in June.
So it'd still be the lowest?
It'd still be low.
Anybody else? Thanks, Terrence.
Thank you, Terrence.
I have nobody else signed up to speak, but is there anybody else out there who might address the council time? Seeing none, we move on. Thank you, everybody. All right, that brings us down to consent agenda. I was thinking we might add 781, the Police Department Vehicles, 786, the agreement with the Visitors Bureau, and 7B1, the first reading of the telecommunication rates. Anybody have any objection of those? Seeing none or hearing none, we'll add those to the consent. Madam Clerk, can you read the, oh, can we have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd move to consent.
Moving second. Madam Clerk, can you read others?
Approval of minutes for January City Council meeting, January 19, 2017, exempting the procurement of the City Corps annual software maintenance agreement for video streaming and agenda management services from competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and that's with Granicus. Liquor license renewal for the Arctic Bar, exempting the procurement of the annual Tier Three technical support and special project services for the telecommunications division from competitive bidding written quotation requirements, and that's with Daniel White Engineering and Associates. Exempting the procurement of annual maintenance and support services for the telecommunications division's core network systems from competitive bidding and written quotation requirements out of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and that's with Brocade of San Jose, California. The 2017 Police Department Vehicle Acquisition, the 2017 Agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau Incorporated, and Ordinance Number 171837, amending Chapter 11.12, Telecommunications Service and Rates Service Agreement.
Anybody have a question on anything? Call the rule.
Seereton?
Yes.
Hafer?
Yes.
Isom? Oh, sorry. She's absent. Flora?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
That passes 6 to nothing. That brings us to unfinished business, general government, appointments boards. Does anybody have a problem with Lindsey Johnson joining the museum board? Hearing none, so be. That takes us down to new business, 782, award of contract 17-02, hole-in-the-wall breakwater upgrade. Pool engineering, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move the City Council authorized award of contract 17-02, hole-in-the-wall harbor floating breakwater upgrades, pool engineering, Inc., in the amount of $42,500. For item A, the specification fabrication and installation of a 60-foot section of floating breakwater to replace the log section at the southern end of the existing breakwater, approved funding in the amount of $42,500 from the hole-in-the-wall harbor floating breakwater upgrade capital account and directed city management to contract documents on behalf of the City Council.
Moving second. Bob, do you mind if I jump in?
No, go right ahead.
Of course not. This is your project.
This is my project. You know, I read and looked through the pool one, but, you know, I really, myself, I like the Western Dock one because, well, the main thing is using bigger tires. Second of all, we can do a proposal where we can replace the log plus put one in front of the breakwater we have now that doesn't seem to be all that great. And we dealt with the problem, and it's done, and I think it will be done for a long time. So myself, I think doing the Western Dock one would be the solution that we wouldn't ever have to come back, at least as long as we're on this at council, to deal with it. I'll listen to other.
What was the price difference between you, Your Honor?
Say again?
What was the price difference between you, Mitch?
Well, the other one would, the big one in front would be, I think, $118,000, and then doing, right now that one's at 43 or something, but it'd be about 85. Am I correct, Carl?
Looking at now, Steve, do you have?
Or it could be 40, is it 44 and 85?
Port Harbors Director Steve Corcoran. The proposals, Pool proposed on everything that Western Dock and Bridge did. This is, their prices were a little bit lower. Western Dock and Bridge gave two options on the diameter. They had a 20-inch pile and 30-inch pile. Pool's was actually 24-inch pile, but the four-foot diameter tires were the same for the 20-inch pile and the 24-inch pile. So the committee reviewed all that stuff and felt that Pool's was probably the better of the two proposals.
But Western's was the bigger tires, his other, one of his proposals was the big.
If you wanted to go to their more expensive option, but even Western Dock and Bridge's smaller options, smaller than Pool's, was more expensive than Pool's.
I just like the bigger tires, and I think that would be great for the front of that old breakwater.
One of the things that the committee addressed was that the issue hasn't really been with the main breakwater. It's been, well, we've had this gap in the other one. That's why we tried the log, and the log was knocking it down, but it just didn't have the mass that we felt was necessary. So, and that's one of the reasons that we recommended going with the 60-foot section to replace that log, see how that performed. And if it's big enough and you want to put another section in front of, or replace what's inside the piles as well, then we could do that at that time. Or if it's determined that you need something even bigger, then we could go with the bigger option from Western Dock and Bridge at that time.
The, when does the Harbor Board meet again?
They meet on the 14th.
Oh, kind of like he did. Yeah, I, as one of the council, we deferred this so I could make sure I talked to Steve about it.
That's fine.
I just want to make sure we make the right choice. I really think we could, if we, I thought, and this has been really through this, using the bigger tires, we could take care of the whole problem at once. But if we could delay this meeting, I'd appreciate it, if we could defer it.
Move to defer?
Yes, we do. Moving second.
I just want to make sure I understand, the bigger, you're talking about Western Dock and Bridge's second option?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, their price for the 60-foot one was $85,000 instead of $42,500.
Correct.
Okay, so I want to make sure you under, I want to make sure which ones we were talking about.
Yeah, let me, go ahead, Bob.
But what did we request?
We requested proposals. We didn't specify.
So we didn't put any specifications in, in regard to?
We specified length, we did not specify diameter.
If you guys don't mind, I mean, it's two weeks, it's going to be two weeks.
To the February 16 meeting?
Correct. Now I'll come talk to Steve.
One thing that would be helpful is to know where the proposal for the additional funding would come from.
I already been talking to Carl, though.
Well, the Harbor Advisory Board's going to want to know that as well, so it'd be helpful for me to know, so.
Yep, I will come talk to you.
Okay.
Yes, Nick?
My only comment, Lou, is if we start jockeying around and almost jockeying specifications, then the one that we're throwing out might need to be given the opportunity to go to the bigger size.
No, they just, I just want to go over the pros, hoes, what we got, and I just.
If we change the specifications.
Yeah, I don't want to change anything, we just review it. I just want to make sure, I just have some questions. Call the rule, please.
Gage?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Flora?
Yes.
Hafer?
Yes.
Seereton?
No.
Thank you, everybody, but Bob.
The only, if we named the, 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 the hole-in-the-wall.
Thank goodness I don't own a boat. All right.
We can come up with something, too.
All right, that brings us to 783, Budget Transfer Amendment, two professional service agreement for updated the water and wastewater rate study, FCS Group. Do we have a motion? No place.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move, I'm going to move motion number two, I think. Anyway, I move the City Council amend agreement with FCS Group to update the 2013 water wastewater rate study by increasing the cost from $43,000 to $58,000, or $43,200 to $58,216. Approve a transfer of $7198 from the appropriate reserves of the KPU Enterprise Fund to the Water Division 2017 Management Consulting Services Account 640-02, and approve a transfer of $7198 from the appropriate reserves of the Wastewater Services Fund to the Wastewater Division's 2017 Management and Consulting Services Account Number 604002.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving second. Dick?
Yeah, well, Lou, what I think I did was, we said that we already owed them the $7198, and I don't want to give them any more money, and I can explain that. The reason being is that we've got numbers from these folks, we've had numbers from these folks several times, and most of the time what it comes down to is, is we got to make a decision, and we're going to tweak it. We're, I'm sure we're not going to take this and jack it up on the fish processors to 300, 400%, and we, and we need to move some other things. I think we just need to sit down and work it out. We're in charge, and we need to do it. So I don't see we need to continue to feed a consultant that feeds on us.
Anybody else? Judy?
I think we pretty much know that we're not really going to follow what the consultant has told us to do, so I sort of agree with Dick, and why spend more money if we're really not going to follow it anyway, and we're going to have to come up with our own plan.
Anybody else?
I'm curious, how did they go beyond budget to begin with? How did we already owe them more money beyond the scope of work authorized?
Dick, I mean, Carl.
Yes, explain that one.
Give us the answer, Dick.
Mr. Mayor, it was an evolving process whereby we kept coming back to the council, and the council requested additional information or modifications of the data that had been presented, such that when we came back to you in December during budget deliberations to give you everything that the council wanted, they had gone over budget.
Did they tell you that? The budget had been expended before they did?
I'll have to determine to go find the district.
They did tell us that it was going to cost more, they didn't specify what it was because we were still submitting information to them and asking them to consider different rate scenarios, but we were trying to meet the objective of the council of getting a report to them before, before the end of the year, so we made a decision to go ahead and go forward.
We kept hoping the numbers would get better for the best of the information.
So I guess the question is, do we want, you know, we've talked about this during the first of the year here about rate increases, looking at the metered on the processors. If you guys think we have enough information, then we vote for this one. If you want some more information, you go for the other one. Then we, if you guys are ready to make a decision where we want to go, and there has been a proposal, I think, up to, already on the table about what to do, we can go ahead and put that back on the agenda.
So if we don't want them, I just want to make sure.
You bet.
How do we vote? Because, I mean, it seems to me like I'm with, I'm with Dick. I think it's time we just sit down and hash it out, because no one's going to like what we should have to do. I mean, we're going to have to do something, but it's probably not going to be what they want us to do.
Yeah.
I don't think it raises it too.
Bob, did you have some 20,000? Good? All right.
Let's just go.
All right, call the rule, please.
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Hafer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Seereton?
Yes.
All right, that passes 6 to nothing. That brings us down to 784, Budget Transfer Change Order 13 Draft to Contract 1338A, Construction Services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project, Leighton Dawson Joint Venture Constructors. Do we have a motion? I think that's the motion we want to use.
Your Honor, I move the City Council, Direct City Manager, KPU Change Order Number 13 to Contract Number 1338A, Construction Services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project between the City of Ketchikan and Leighton Dawson Joint Venture Construction in the amount of $968,324, bringing the total contract cost to $52,169,483.30. Approved funding from the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion One Capital Account and directed city manager to execute the order on the tent between the city and Peace Health regarding Peace Health participation and the costs of the change order.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving in second. Bob, do you want to add anything?
Well, if Carl explained anything, if he wants to, in regards to how the process is going to work and what Peace Health has agreed to contribute in regards to a particular portion of the project or the best tracking of getting some of this done.
Carl?
Mr. Mayor, as I indicated in both my reports to the council, this has been a process that's been ongoing for the last three or four months. Essentially, when we turned the building over to Peace Health, they identified a number of issues that they felt needed to be resolved before they could occupy the surgical department. We've been discussing those issues, I think they totaled about 38, and we were able to really narrow them down such that, what you see in Change Order 13 represents about seven items that really fall within the original scope of the project that the city agreed to provide. There were a number that were resolved by Dowell and Leighton Dawson, and then Peace Health took on about 20 of those issues, either agreeing to fund them or changing their internal operations to resolve the issues that they had raised. In the give and take that followed in those discussions and recognizing that there were going to be increased prices, Peace Health has essentially put on the table about $246,000 worth of their funds in terms of paying for, getting these improvements done in an expedited manner, as well as paying for the cost of our consultant fees that will escalate because of the expedited timetable. And then they're also putting money on the table to purchase doors that they feel will be needed relative to the surgery area. All of this has been laid out in both reports. Really, the driving factor from our perspective is we want to get Peace Health into that surgery suite as soon as possible because Leighton Dawson really can't begin Phase Two of the project in earnest until Peace Health is out of the existing ORs. So I think it's in everybody's best interest that we get this work done, get Peace Health in the new surgery suites so that Dawson can start, but more importantly, that those facilities, which are state-of-the-art, are available to the community at large. So Mr. Hilson and I believe this is an appropriate resolution of the issue, and we're recommending approval of the change order. One final comment I would make, there have been a lot of numbers flying around the community in recent weeks. The projections that we've given you for both Change Order 13, as well as the transition phase that Dawson has under contract, we are still within budget as the budget was established by the voters when they approved the bond several years ago. So everything that we've set out to do in terms of the initial construction of the new wing and connecting it to the hospital is within budget. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Rick, Dick?
Yeah, just a comment on one of the comments that Carl made about numbers flying around town, and I, probably most of us read the one in the city news, upwards of $90,000, and which is grossly wrong.
90 million.
90 million.
Ninety million, you're right.
Which was even more gross.
It really goes through law for my part. But at some point in time, maybe, I'm gonna say the manager and with the mayor can put a letter together telling the truth and say what it's worth, what we're spending, and what we're up to and so forth, so that the public does have the facts instead of fake news or lies, or whatever you wanna call it, floating around.
Do, do, excuse us, both of you, thanks.
Hold on, Bob?
Yeah, a couple things. In regards to those larger numbers, the public has realized that we're working on the first phase of what we planned with a four-phase construction project. So that 74 million may be a realistic number if you completed all four phases. But we only went ahead with the first phase, which started with, uh, money and HERSHA grants, and then we got some more money from the state for engineering, then we went on to a $15 million grant from the state, then we floated a bond and got the rest of it, brought it to, I think, $58 million. And so we're within that budget for the first phase, and we've actually been able through valued engineering to carve out enough money to complete phase two, which is to get us into the hospital through a different corridor, through the old surgical suites. So I think that's where some of those numbers may be misconstrued in the public, so. But for this phase, I, looking at the numbers that have been produced by, uh, our financing by, uh, the manager's office, we're within the, the budget constraints that we started with. So I guess my question is for Nancy or Gary in regards to Peace Health's position with this change order number 13. Do you see this as completing the project to a point where you will occupy the surgical suites?
Yes.
Excellent.
Can we control that?
Yes, Kelly.
I have a question, since I'm kinda new to this project. My only, what I'd like to see is, and I think what most people are confused on, is based on what I read, it looked as if we, we put together this project, we have items that all of a sudden are no longer valid based on regulation and equipment maintenance. And I'd like to know the dates of when those, um, those changes in the medical, um, equipment and regulations and standards for those items came into play, and why during this project, in my opinion, people were not talking and saying we need to fix these things prior to doing it. I've not heard one thing in the, in, since I've been on the council about what needs to happen, or hey, we've got new regulations, so before we put this in, we need to fix this. I think, um, I'd like to see that. I think that I'd like to know what, expanding the scope of a wash area at the rate of $397,156 is, um, meaning, are we tearing out what we already put in? And, or is this? I just would like, I think those things need to be clearer, and, um, because otherwise we're gonna have the public, right, going, what, what are you doing? I mean, that's just my two cents to the peanut gallery. But the other thing I have, and it, you know, it's like replacing the mechanical operated shades in an operating room. See, all these things to me, based on what I read and what I looked up, um, regulations and standard of medication, medical equipment maintenance, uh, changes were in 2011, 2013. Maybe I'm wrong, that's what I looked up. Seems to me that, um, between the contractor, the hospital, and the city, people should have been talking while this project was going on. Um, and then, you know, I mean, I'll leave it at that. I have, I have my other, you know, I, I would also like to bring up the fact that, um, that, you know, there's a lot of people, including myself, that, um, don't feel that the hospital is, um, very supportive of the community and medical needs in the sense that, you know, we don't get a bill till a year later. And I'm just gonna throw that out there, cause you guys hear, but when you don't get a bill and you go to collections, right, a, a year later, um, and I'm not the only one that's had that happen. So to me, it's like, um, you're asking for more money, and I wanna break down as to why this is happening and why this, these items and Dawson, all the contractors and the hospital, we're not talking when these changes were made in the regulations.
Good points.
Excellent points.
Carl, can you give us some answers on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else?
Your Honor.
Yes.
So in my short tenure, tenure on this council, I have learned that, uh, the appropriate response to the term change order is to cringe. Because when things like this happen at the 11th hour, it makes almost no sense at all to say, well, no, let's stop at the 99 percent and not get this over the finish line. Um, but General Lee makes a great point. This is quoted from the document, cause I have questions about this too. "The modifications agreed to by Peace Health and city, city staff are the result of various factors, including code revisions that occurred after the design was completed. Improvements in technology making what was designed and installed out of date in terms of best practices." This is something that the public should know going forward as we vote on this. And I agree again with General Lee, how do we build a new hospital and put obsolete stuff in it before we occupy it?
Bob?
Just from some of the background that I've done on this, and I've been asking questions of staff, uh, about this. One of the changes in technology is there was a blind system in the surgical suites that, uh, when they did all their tours of other surgical suites in other states, they looked at them and they liked. But they've been reported that they have failed their infectious control, uh, regulations because of these blinds are hard to clean, they're hard to do.
Right.
So the new technology is the blinds are inside of the windows. Inside, so they're enclosed.
Encased in glass.
Yeah, they're enclosed in glass, so you, you don't have that. And that's one of the changes in technology that came about that I, you know, one of the things in here is the blinds and stuff that's going on. Uh, the other thing with infection control is in this particular room that they have the negative air pressure, they do, they do the, uh, looks at the lungs and, and different things with fiber ox tubes. And they partially clean them. And then they can move them to a sterile area, different area. Well, thought now is in medical, if, if you're doing somebody with tuberculosis or something, you want that sterilized in that room before you move it anyplace else in the hospital. Well, that, the change in practices and how they manage this stuff is, is part of this cost. And as, as they watch this thing come together and they see what's going on with new technology and other things, um, do you wanna build something that you're probably gonna have to fix in the future? I don't.
We're building something that we have to fix before we can use it. That's my point.
Yeah.
And I understand, I, 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 I read that as well. And I'm just trying to under, I'm just trying to understand if we need, if now we need negative air pressure to do.
I, I ask that.
Why didn't we think of that before? If glass enclosed blinds are the way to go, were they not in existence until after we had completed this phase? These are just questions. I just find it.
I understand.
I just find it remarkable that we are almost completing, in addition to the hospital that's obsolete, has obsolescence in it, and things that aren't up to code. I just, I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around it, that's all.
Kelly?
And just the, the other thing is, is when is it that the hospital or the Peace Health doesn't become responsible for what goes in there? And where we're always churning out more money for it.
Was the city.
It's our building.
Part of the design as far as when it came to equipment and things like that? Did the city have input, or was that at the, at the behest of what Peace Health desired?
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me make a couple comments, and I'll, I'll respond to the council member Flora's last statement first. Uh, in terms of the design of this facility, our engineering division, basically our civil engineers, we are not medical technology experts by any means, and we had to rely on both the architect and Peace Health relative to the, to the different components that went into this facility. I clearly understand the frustration that I'm hearing from council members, and I will attempt to respond to some of the issues you've raised. But I think you've got to understand that the design and construction of this facility did not take place in a static environment. As things were being designed, as things were being built, technology and codes evolved, they changed. And assumptions that were made in 2010 maybe no longer were applicable in 2016 or 2017. Um, one, one can argue that if we had had the resource, resources, we should have been on top of every code change nationally and state. Reality, it doesn't work that way. I mean, and, and you gotta understand that. Um, I think this community has an excellent facility. Um, that will serve the community's interests for a long time. Um, as I said, for me, the driving force right now is not only just to get phase one done, but to get that transition corridor built and, and, and get that completed. Um, we've gotta get Peace Health into the new, the new surgery suites, uh, so they can get out of the old building and we, and we can finish up the work that's gotta be put over there.
Anybody else? Call the rule.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
Yeah, that passes five to one. That brings us down to 785, 2017 Community Agency Funding Agreements. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move alternative motion two. I move the city council refer the 2017 Community Agency Funding Applications back to the Community Grants Committee for revised recommendations that expend no more than the 2017 Community Grant Program Contract Purchase Services Appropriation of $380,407.
Second. Moving in second. Mark, you want to start?
Well, while we're on the subject of money, um, I would like to see the committee revisit this. I looked at the list. There simply isn't a bad or unworthy cause or agency on that list. But I think it's in our best interest long-term to exhibit some fiscal discipline and not go over budget on this. The only other comment I have is, I'm not sure how the committee would choose to get it back on budget, but I suppose the options are to reduce everybody by a little bit. I would ask the committee to consider those agencies with the most direct humanitarian aid, seniors, the elderly, the disabled, to maybe have a little bit of a priority over some of the other agencies.
Anybody else? Judy?
I just, um, Kelly just passed me this, and I haven't seen it before, but I think I know what this is. So if maybe Carl could explain, because I think I understand it, but that the original amount that was given to the committee was $455,407. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that had to do with the, that homeless piece.
It was $75,000 put into the.
Right, and we decided to take that out, right? And then if we look at our, uh, sales tax receipts and the 3.24 percent that is supposed to be allotted to the community agencies, that actually is only $367,943. And so, but it says 380 here. I just wanna be clear how we got.
The 380 figure was derived, there was a carryover of unspent funds.
Okay, good, all right.
It did 360, I think. Bob?
Your Honor, and I think when I remember this originally went in, the proposals for carryovers were not necessarily an option. I think that when we dispersed the money, then it was gonna go back into the general fund, whichever one. But I'm not sure if, if we were gonna, because I didn't think we wanted to have a, an account that kept building due to anything that we had kept in reserve. Bob, do you remember how that went?
Okay, I'm trying to remember the policy. First of all, the funding comes from four different sources. Those public would not be as appropriate for all of it to go out into the general fund. I, I don't remember the council specifically setting the policy of what would happen if there was any money left over. So what we did, we took the money that was left over and added it to the $357,000, the council members' income, just reference to. And that would be the opportunity to get red as always reserved, and we weren't building them up. That was what we were trying to do. So there was about $12,000 left over, so we added 12,000 to the $357,000, it come up to $580,000.
I mean, Dick?
I don't understand the leftover, because if I recall correctly, a year ago, when the committee dealt out money, they had a few thousand dollars left over, and they spent it. So how do we get a leftover that we're carrying forward?
I would have to go back and, and look into that to see what happened. Uh, sometimes it's happened before, an agency has requested funding for whatever reason, they didn't claim that funding, that it happened a couple of times, it's rare, but it has happened a couple of times. I'm not sure it happened in 2015.
I think there was also a factor with how it was calculated. That's what Carl said at one point, was that there'd been some problem where they had, they hadn't put as mu, enough, as much money in as, as had been called for. I guess that was how.
It came in later, cause.
Something, something.
Go ahead, Dave.
So, as committee chair, I feel like I should, I should defend what the committee did. Um, Siri, and, and, and I did in the memo to Siri, that one, one point I forgot to mention is an important one when we're looking at this, is, is if you notice, one of the, uh, one of the groups was cut back dramatically last year. Um, primarily because there was no, they were cut, their original request was 25,000, which they actually had been receiving from the city council for years. Last year, we cut that back to 8,000. We cut it back simply because they couldn't guarantee they were going to have a local presence. We sat here and, and, and the lady from the group said, I will move to Ketchikan. Guess what? She did. They have a local presence. So that's a $17,000 change right there over the previous year. And I guess, um, we were disinclined to wanna penalize them for take, for, for, for basically, um, keeping the ear of the bargain. So that was one reason why we, we obviously had. And, and you could, you could argue that the, the, perhaps the community did not do its job by simply saying, here's what you asked for, we'll, we'll give you that. We can take back in. But I guess I would like to have a little more to work with than, than the 380, particularly for that one group. Because if we give them $8,000 again, uh, we've basically walked, walked back on our word. So.
And they'll probably pull.
And they'll probably pull. And that'd be unfortunate, because basically we said, you gotta do this and that and the other.
But we didn't promise them $25,000 if they moved here, right?
No, we didn't. But we spoke, we said, look, we will look at this again next year. If you're here, you will probably get a decent amount. We, we didn't give the exact amount. But once again, if we haven't got our word, I'm not sure we have.
Dick?
My only thought on that, Dave, is that if we need to go back and look at 2016, 15, and see what happened, because I suspect that since we didn't give that group even close to the 25, that we distributed that extra money amongst the others, and they would have gotten, not gotten as much as they did.
In 2016, you mean?
In 2000, well.
Yeah, last year.
They got more in 2016 than they did in 2015 because.
The other groups.
Yes, they got. Yes, they got less and they got more in sixteen because of the, we didn't distribute that away. So you just have to look at it that way and see how to do it.
The other thing we looked at is the fact that they, all of these groups have kind of formed a, they're working together in a way that even, I've been working with a lot of these groups and they've come together in a way that I haven't seen since I've been back. And most people who've been here and worked with these groups haven't seen in probably ever. Most of them are working on their bones at this point. And we could argue that the arts and small business and the first city players and historic Ketchikan really have no relevancy in preserving mental health or physical health or just, you know, we could just go with the, and get rid of all of them. However, I would strongly oppose that, because those, each of those entities are also working with like Rendezvous Senior Centers, Southeast Alaska Independent Living, and senior services doing our projects with our seniors and different groups. But they are the reason, they are a vital piece of Ketchikan that promotes good health, good mental health and physical health, and it keeps people doing things that are positive versus negative. And they are the very nature of why visitors come here and they love it here. Because as I was on the docks this summer and doing those surveys, most, almost every single one of them, I spent a little extra time with, they would, the first thing they would say is, "It's so nice to come to a place where your stores aren't the same." And yeah, we have, we do have the jewelry stores, we have the stores that have a lot of the carryo stuff. However, we have a very large group of artists that are an economic value to this community and all of these programs promote a very healthy environment that we need to keep.
My question, Dave, what was your guys' thinking on Oceans of Alaska?
We would like to see the council swing that separately. Because basically, what you're doing is saying, "We need to cut the grants to fit that in."
But, well, anybody can apply for the grants, right?
But you're still cutting the existing grants, by doing, by a fairly large portion.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, by not funding, by not giving everybody what they want?
Well, by not, or actually, if you go back to the three eighty, you were probably looking at then cutting some of the money that the grant groups got last year.
Yeah.
It's close, it's close. It's.
I guess for me, everybody.
Hold on, hold on, one person at a time.
Anybody can apply, right? So, didn't they apply with everybody else?
They did. They got in at the last minute.
Right. So why, I guess.
Because it was our feeling that we didn't wanna penalize the existing groups by adding a fairly large last-minute one. The council, the council decided.
Bob?
When we first started this, the list of applicants was frozen at sixteen. And we opened it up because, in reality, there's always gonna be more need than we have money. And I think the city Ketchikan is paying its fair share at the three eighty that we're doing. And there may be more asks next year from different organizations that start with the process of the community banding together to do things, but doesn't mean we have more money to throw into that pot. So I know it's a tough situation, it was really tough that first when we did it with the limited funds that we had to try to figure out, and it was meeting after meeting to get there. But I'm still gonna support that we stay with the budgeted amount that we have. And we started out using that number based on sales tax receipts, so we could get it out of the political arena, so it wouldn't touch a political football. And I, I understand that the borough is gonna be reducing the fund that they have available for this, the state of Alaska is gonna get in that same boat. And we have lots of needs in front of us in regards to port infrastructure and other things that are going on in the community, and money's gonna get tighter and tighter. I wish all these organizations well, but the reality of it is, is money's just gonna be tight for a while.
Okay, what we have before is the motion to.
Would you like to make an amendment?
You may.
I'd like to raise the total to three ninety. What was the three eighty?
Three eighty-four.
Three ninety-four oh seven.
Three ninety-four oh seven. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
You got a second. Dave?
No, just what I said before. You know, I feel a need to try, to try to get, get some money for that organization that basically, you know, kind of took us at our word.
Okay, call the roll on the amendment.
Seaberton?
No.
Kiper?
Yes.
Flora?
No.
Kuse?
No.
Singy?
No.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay, that amendment fails. What we have on the table now is to keep it at the three eighty and send it back to the committee. Call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuse?
Yes.
Singy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to nothing. That brings us down to, if you even did that, approval vouchers, daily news, one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to approve vouchers, Ketchikan daily news, in the amount of one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents.
Move in second, and call the roll.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuse?
Yes.
Singy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to nothing, brings us down to managers' report.
I have nothing to add.
Oh, okay. Anybody have any questions on the managers' report?
Lou, did you figure out what's gonna happen with Senator Ray Sirver-Forceman and Thomas Stacey?
I was gonna ask Carl, as one of my questions, if we got a thing back from BAM, any ideas? We could do anything?
Mr. Mayor, the managers' report, ninety-six, BAM quoted a price, initial price, two to three hundred thousand. We know that's probably gonna come in somewhat higher, because they didn't do an actual inspection of the pipe they were hoping to connect to. That does not include any permitting considerations, and given that the work currently under contract is probably gonna get underway at the end of February, early March, I don't see an alternative that, number one, you can be able to fund and/or get permitted before the other work has to be done.
Does that have to be permitted? Since we already have permits to dump it in for a water?
For a new outfall, absolutely.
Even though the outfall's gonna be in the same spot, right?
You were extending it out, you were hoping that it would be extended out into the narrows.
No, extended out to the end of the float, so it's more out there by the water, so it doesn't just surf up.
Deferred Public Works Director.
Good evening, Public Works Director, Mark Hilson. Yes, there would have to be new permits issued for the work in the harbor to relocate that pipe. We'd also have to survey the bottom of the harbor. This is a gravity outfall, so we'd wanna keep it sloping, even though it's underwater. We wouldn't want it to fill up with solids, because it had a sag in it. So there'd be quite a bit involved. So BAM's taken this price as really a rough order of magnitude without a design, but with some thought.
Thank you very much.
And where is this going to outfall right presently? Right into Thomas Stacey?
Yes, presently, yes.
Right underneath the place over by the pot, which.
Right.
Which is in a great spot. Thank you very much.
All right, anybody else have any questions on the managers' report? Your Honor?
Yes.
I see two departments have people resigning, and I was curious if it's possible to explore the possibility of not immediately filling those positions, and if that would cause undue burden on those departments, or could we save a little money?
Mr. Mayor, I can answer categorically on the port side. That would be a major hit, because that position does all the summer management of operations, not for all the people we employ during the season, that particular individual's in charge of that, helps coordinate with all the tour companies. My opinion, that would be difficult. On the treasury and customer service supervisor, I'd have to defer the finance.
Can I ask another question first on the ports side? At this roll rate, February, what's the likelihood of filling that position with a competent individual by the time that it's really high season? Sorry, Bob.
Port Harbors Director Steve Copron, we already have applicants ready to put in as soon as we put it on the street. I know at least one of them is very qualified. And if I'm told that we're not gonna fill the position, then you're gonna fill another one, because I will quit.
You don't wanna run the port.
Close return.
Any other questions, Mark? Okay, anybody else have any questions on the?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to take recognition of the fact that we have two departments, the wastewater department, we had wastewater operator of the year, Kathy Holzman, I'd like to congratulate her on that. And then we also had in our water division, the Alaska Rural Water Association recognized Ketchikan as being exceptional in regards to populations that exceed a thousand in Alaska. And it's an award that's given out by a jury of the peers of the Rural Water Association. So Mr. Kanekar should be congratulated on that in his division, so.
Thanks, Bob. All right, that brings us down to city clerk's file.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney's file.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Future agenda items. Mayor and council comments. Dick?
Just one, and it's just a, I'm gonna say a thought for the manager and maybe the harbor, head of harbors. Looking at the visitors and the way they come in, do we need to consider some type of a small visitor's booth on dock four? Because right now, they're having to walk there from four to three. We've got one on two and one, we've got one on three. And it needs to be done very cheaply, but if there was a body up there somewhere in maybe one of the old booths, but just, just give it a thought, and if you think it's worthwhile, throw it back at us. Otherwise, we've been doing it this way for years.
Jay?
A couple things. A few of us attended the celebration of the stars this past weekend, and it was kinda nice to see businesses in our community being recognized. I personally was pretty excited that we had four council people there and the borough assembly only had the mayor. Not that it's a competition, but just saying. And as far as the community agencies go, I mean, I work very closely with many of these agencies, and I really understand, I mean, a lot of them come out and help people that I work with. And I wish we had more money, but we don't. And now that the state of Alaska is not gonna allow people to smoke pot in their business area, I'm afraid we're just not gonna get, you know, much more marijuana tax dollars like.
Well, I guess on the positive side, we've got two departments that have awards, which is awesome. That was nice to see. They deserve it, they worked really hard. The, I'm hoping that maybe we can look at that cigarette tax, maybe we can bump up our funding for, and in profit. In the possibility that we might actually lower some of our rates in cancer and youth use, maybe use some, like we were said before, use it for some of our grant, community grants programs. And that's about it.
Bob?
I'd go along with Judy, the celebration of the stars was a very well-done program. It represented the community very well. There was a lot of awards given, a lot of appreciation for the process that they went through to get there. So that was real nice. I guess I'd like to have councils think about how they wanna attack this, going to the metered water rate, and through that discussion and getting to the bottom line. We've tried to get there a couple times in the past and haven't quite made it. And I think that we're really at a point where we need to make that determination. And I understand there's a lot of players in the game, and there's at least one that would probably take a pretty significant raise in their rates. And again, it's all based on the volume of water that they're actually using. And if there's conservation that could still be had there, I'm not entirely sure. I think it is a phased-in process, but I think we need to start the process. That's where I wanna go with this. And I think that's gonna come to light with some of the industrial and commercial property that we're gonna have to deal with too, because they're gonna move over to that same system. But I think the city has to take a look at the system they're gonna put in place to manage that. I know that there's, we gotta read those meters, and we gotta process the bill score, and we gotta make sure that we're ready to do that when we take that step. So, but I'd like to figure out if we're gonna have a workshop. It's a, it's a pretty big project to take on at a regular council meeting, so I don't know how we want to wait that.
Thanks, Bob. Dave?
Yeah, Your Honor, thank you. I apologize for raising this issue now, but same time, we really care to raise these issues. And I will try to keep this as brief as possible. I also apologize for not being here at the last meeting when this came up, because obviously I would have been able to say these things then and hopefully have a different outcome. This has to do with the council's decision at the last meeting to not fund the bus service up to Cape Fox Hill during the event that's taking place this week. And it seems to me that we suffered from a severe sense of institutional amnesia. We decided, not us, the city council decided a couple of decades ago plus, to locate the civic center, which is our building, it's a public building, we should provide access to it, in a location that was centrally located, but not very convenient. We also knew at the time, there wasn't enough parking. And there wouldn't be enough parking, no matter what we did, there would not be enough parking for the major events up there. But that was okay, because we worked that deal with another organization to provide the tram, the finicular. Unfortunately, what we've learned over the last two decades is we cannot compel another organization to live up to that part of the bargain. And they're just not gonna do it anymore. So that leaves us with a public building that our access for a lot of our people is somewhat limited to. Particularly since the fire department, quite rightly, started enforcing the rules, you couldn't park on the hillside, you couldn't park in all those little holes, the people would park. Now, does this happen on every event up there? No. But the major ones, yes. So the city a few years ago started saying, "Okay, well, we'll figure out some way to get bus service up there." Now, the council, obviously, last week or two weeks ago felt that was an undue burden, we should put it into grants, we should do other things. And I guess I was most disturbed when I heard the phrase that that was not our responsibility. Because, you know, we knew what the situation was. And we basically said, "Okay, you know, we're gonna let this slide, there's not enough parking up there, we'll live with that as long as the tram runs. Tram doesn't run, suddenly it becomes a major issue." So the way I see it, we have three options here, folks. We can tear down the building and put in some. We can tear down the building and put it somewhere else. Of course, we've lost all that space down, down the dock, which was the original idea for it, so can't do that anymore, and we don't want to do that, that's, that's tens of millions of dollars we don't want to spend. We can do what the, the company that runs the Funicular wants to do and give them a huge chunk of money to fix the day, they're going to build a new one for several hundred thousand dollars plus. Or we can provide a couple thousand dollars now and again so the buses run up there. It doesn't seem like it's that hard of a decision. As, as to whether we should just take the money, the two or three thousand dollars and request that the local groups make that part of their grant requests, well, once again, we're kind of, we're penalizing them for building a somewhat inaccessible facility. And plus, if you look back to when the grants were started, and Bob remembers this, Lou remembers this, a lot of the idea for those grants was that we, we, what we were providing was funding for operations, you know, to keep the lights on, to, you know, have, have a copy machine. Because frankly, nonprofits can frequently get money for programs or special projects, but anyone who's worked with a nonprofit knows what you almost never can do unless you're one of the social service ones that gets funded by the state, is get money for operations. So even, even if we take three thousand dollars out of, out of nonprofits', you know, grant money, so they, so, so, so we can afford to fund transportation to their events, and our facility, by the way, once again, our facility, we're penalizing them. So we see, well, let's just have them do a three thousand dollars as part of their grant, so we can provide, so, so we'll provide a bus service at the civic center. That's not really fair. So, that's the end of my soapbox, but obviously, this will also come in the future. Once again, we have to make sure we have access to our civic center.
Mayor.
Well, for other stuff too, because that's not the only one, some of the other ones do. And frankly, if we cannot compel you know who to, to fix that and run that tram in the winter, it's up to us. So it is our responsibility.
Thanks, Dave. Mark?
Two things. Hats off to Mr. Hilsen and Public Works for taking on the Spruce Millway reconstruction in-house. I think that's awesome. I would love to see that scenario repeated whenever it's practical. If we can do it internally, get a quality job and save a few dollars, I think that's great. My other comment is about the budget and money in general. I just want everybody to be clear that when I asked, the council and the mayor were, was in receipt of a letter from a city resident expressing his concerns over budget and staffing and things of that nature. When we look at grants, when we look at unfilled or positions that are being resigned, I'm not looking at making anybody's life unduly hard. I don't think there's a grant, or I don't think there's an agency on that grant list that's not worthy, but as Councilmember Seaberton said, money's tight, it's going to be tight for a while. And I think looking at any particular situation from as many sides as possible, including at times doing a little more with a little less, just might be something to consider. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thanks, Mark. I'm having a couple things. Steve, can you come up here real quicks? Go over. Steve sent me an email, and can you explain what we're after here again, so we can see if we can get some money donated to that Coast Guard thing?
Port Harbors Director Steve Copron. The two new Coast Guard cutters that are going to be homeported here, the John McCormick and the Bailey Barco. The first one, the commissioning ceremony's going to be April 12th. I was asked to join the ad hoc committee for the commissioning ceremonies, and that along with some other local people. Traditionally, when a ship is commissioned, there are some things that the, by law, the Coast Guard is not allowed to spend money on, and, and a lot of it has to do with the, the receptions. And so for each one of these, these commissioning ceremonies, there's going to be three receptions. There's a pre-reception for the, the sponsors of the vessel, there's the, the actual reception after the, the ceremony itself, and there's a third one, I can't think of the name of it. But they also, they purchase a spyglass, plaques, commissioning plaques for the crew and for the major donors, and usually a, a coin for each one of the, the crew members, and also to give out to, to some of the participants. Usually, in most places where there's a, a ship commissioned, it's a larger city, there's a Navy League, and the Navy League usually chips in to, to fill that void. In small communities like this, there is no Navy League, and they look for other sources for donations and that. There are, they're a few thousand dollars short of what their goal was, and the, the suggestion was that perhaps the borough and the city, since as a newly designated Coast Guard city, will be willing, out of the community promotions fund, to kick in maybe five hundred to a thousand dollars each. I sent an email to Mayor Landis and to Mayor Williams, I haven't heard back from Mayor Landis yet, but Mayor Williams said he would bring it up tonight, whether or not we should bring something back for, for something from community promotions to go towards the, the commissioning ceremony fundings.
So my question is, you guys want to, I think it'd be a good idea, would you guys want to put five or a thousand in from our fund that we have in the council?
New families to town, I think so.
Okay. Are you guys willing to do a thousand?
The mayor's account, full account?
Yeah.
How much is in the, in that account?
Don't we start with a couple thousand, Carl?
It's eight thousand.
That's for my free spending plan. Okay. We'll take.
As far as I know, this would be for the McCormick, April 12th. The Barco is going to be commissioned in June, but what they're telling me is that they're going to be commissioning her in Juneau, even though it's a Ketchikan homeported vessel, their justification being that there will be some state officials that would not be coming down for the McCormick's commissioning in April, and they might want to, they wanted to kind of spread the, the joy, I guess, up, up to the capital city.
Well, tell them they'll be getting a check for a thousand to help commission it.
All right, I'd love to know that. Also, and I'd like to point out, the keynote speaker for the McCormick commission is going to be the Commandant of the Coast Guard, which is very rare for a vessel this small to have the Commandant be the keynote speaker for the commission, so that was, that was kind of cool to hear.
I'll mark my calendar.
Where are they doing that?
It'll be at the Coast Guard base. The next, the, April 12th, I believe 10 a.m. is going to be the actual commission ceremony. There'll be invitations and that going out.
That's cool.
All right, that brings the meeting, thanks, Steve.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Could I get us to add something to the agenda, the next agenda?
This is my time. You bet, what do you got?
Well, I think Dave makes a good point, and I would like us to discuss, you know, that facility and how we get up there, because my only, I can't say the word I was going to say, about it is that if we're going to do this, what, where, what events do we do? Is there a number of people, you know, what's our procedure and our policy for doing that? I mean, we need to be clear on that.
We'll put it on the agenda, then we can.
I think we should do that, I don't, you know, or fix.
Thank you very much.
I don't agree with you, fixing the tram, you know.
Now, back to my. Thank you. All right, the naming committee met, we had options for naming the visitors bureau. Like the hospital, we came with no.
Consensus.
Consensus. And so right now, we're nowhere at that. Talked about maybe some kind of history piece down there or at the museum, explaining how that all started down there and everything, but that's as far as we got. Jay from Julie's Combe, Carl, they, he sees the work going on, and I guess he's talked to some people that's been working on the street. They have, he, they're the only business down there open, and they're going to be unloading a lot of freight and everything in mid-February, and they're wondering if they could work around somehow that's not being done when they're doing their, either get it done earlier, I guess later. So he was concerned about that.
See what we can do, Mr. Mayor.
Twenty-five, twenty-five is his number. Radio, who wants to do the radio? They're tired of me.
Robert.
Thanks, Bob. And we have an executive session, do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move that the city council declare that consistent with the city manager's memorandum dated January 20th, 217, in the best interest of the city, go into executive session in accordance with KMC 2.04.025A3 and AS 44.62.310C3 and discuss litigation strategies with legal counsel within the attorney-client privilege regarding the recovery from Joseph Burns and Rehabilitation Research Institute. Other costs the city Ketchikan has incurred in the results of the demolition of 347 Bobby Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Who didn't second the color roll?
Gage?
She can't go.
She can't go in.
Singy?
Yes.
Kuse?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
No.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Did we pass?
Yes.
Okay, that's a, that's a mean, huh? So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Thank you, everybody.